Good evening and welcome to the special town council meeting of Monday, February 6th, 2023 here at 7:00 PM in the McKinnon Council Chambers. Relative to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio means. The first order of business is called to order. The second order of business is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3, roll call.
Councillor Adams.
Present.
Councillor Daniel.
Present.
Councillor Dow.
Present.
Councillor Lozow.
Present.
Councillor Marquetti.
Present.
Councillor Montigny.
Present.
Councillor Rivas.
Present.
Councillor Ryan.
Present.
And Councillor Steves.
Present.
Very good, nine present. We're all here. Let's have a meeting. Item number four, vote to approve the appointment of Charles Blanchard as interim town manager for a period of six months, starting February 13th, 2023, and ending August 14th, 2023, pending successful completion of state ethics and successful contract negotiations. We have a motion by Councillor Lozow, a second by Councillor Ryan. I'd like to just start by saying this has been an involved process, a very cooperative process by the people that are involved, and we're very happy to have Mr. Blanchard here tonight. Welcome, Mr. Blanchard.
Thank you, I'm very happy to be here.
Great. Let's start off by asking you to just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. First of all, I have 45 years municipal management experience, 30 years as an elected official, 13 of that was underwater and sewer commission in Sturridge, and 17 on the board of selectmen, and then I've had 15 years actually as a municipal employee, five as town minister in Paxton, eight as a town manager in Palmer, and two years as an interim, both in Williamstown and in Palmer when I started. So over the years, I've dealt with most of the issues that Southbridge faces today, and I think I'm prepared to help you keep the town moving forward as you move toward a transition to a new town manager. I've reviewed the town manager's FY22 goal summary, and these are all things that I've had experience with and can certainly, you know, hit the road running and work on them. So I'm really interested in that. I know probably, you know, one question that might come up is, you know, why do I want the job? And actually, it's interesting because my first full-time municipal position in Paxton as the first town administrator came rather late in my career. I mean, it was only a few months before my 60th birthday when I got that job, and which is why I really have the same commitment and passion for the job that I did as I started on that first day in Paxton 18 years ago. So it's something I enjoy, I certainly look forward to this, and so I hope that you'll certainly confirm me. My longest service as a town manager was in Palmer, which a community that I feel is very similar to Southbridge. The demographics, the average single-family tax bill is exactly the same, a lot of the same issues, and so I think that this experience will help me as I work with you in the department managers to address the issues that we have to deal with.
Very good. At this point, I'll open it up to the council. Is there anyone that -- Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Blanchard, for attending this evening, and thank you for a great interview the other night with myself and four others. I just wanted to, not really asking a question, because we did that the other day, and I gotta tell you, it was great to hear what you had to say. But to the rest of the council, some of the things that we spoke with, from the HR director to the accountant, to three councillors up here, was leadership skills and principles that he holds and has held for some time, his management skills as well, all encompassing. I mean, these bullets that we started with turned into great conversations as we went along, and we expanded even from there, answering questions on top of answers. Talked about his service to this local community, the fact that he's literally 20 minutes away, if that.
Well, like five.
What's that?
Five minutes away.
Yeah.
It was the closest I've ever been to a, you know, a real job. That's great. I think it's three and a half miles, you know.
Well, I don't know, maybe 20 minutes, who knows?
Hopefully, traffic won't be that bad.
But that being said, we talked about the economic side of the House and where we're standing, the issues that we're facing right now in the town, through the town council and the staffing issues that we and a lot of other communities are having issues with, but obviously, we have a budget that's coming up very soon, and we obviously need the right leadership skills and management to move that along with the department heads within our community. And that encompassed quite a, almost over, almost an hour with the conversation. So I just wanted to let the councillors that are here today that weren't privy to that know that these are the things that we did discuss over and over again. Thank you.
Good. Councillor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome aboard, thank you Charlie for coming in. I've got a couple of quick questions. As you mentioned, I know you were Palmer Town Manager, and I remember, if I remember correctly, you supported their casino project when the voters ended up rejecting it. So what I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit is about what you learned most from that experience and how that may have changed your approach to dealing with big public issues.
Well, as far as supporting it, I mean, the town council supported it, and I was charged with the responsibility of negotiating the host community agreement, so I certainly did support it. I mean, I think it was a great project for Palmer. I know people have strong feelings on casinos one way or the other, but it was really the only project of all the ones that went forward that really met the intent of the expanded gaming act. I mean, it was 152 acres right off the Mass Pike. It really met the goal of the gaming commission. Unfortunately, when it came down to the vote, they had, I think, 5,200 people voted and it lost by 97 votes. But the host community agreement that we negotiated was really the best for any community, largely because of the fact that Palmer was a relatively small community compared to Springfield and the others. I mean, at that time, the tax revenue that was being raised in Palmer was $15 million. The host community agreement that we negotiated would have gotten 15 to 18 million the first year, and then an additional 2 or 3 million in hotel motel tax as businesses began to expand. So I did learn that there's certainly an opportunity to work with a large entity like that, you can negotiate and get good things for a community. As far as changing my outlook on projects or working with people, it was a positive experience for me. It was certainly disappointing when the voters didn't go along with it. There was always that question, I think, even if it had passed, you know, the vote that was required, whether or not the gaming commission would have given it to Palmer when there was so much pressure to get MGM into Springfield. But, you know, it was a positive experience for me anyway, and so.
Okay, and to follow up then, how would you say that changed, or if it did or did not, change your way of approaching dealing with the public as a whole, as opposed to the entities that you were negotiating with?
Well, you know, that's, again, you know, my role in dealing with the public on projects like that, whether it's something as controversial as a casino, we've been trying to, you know, get support for a police station and things like that, is to really, you know, reach out to the public, give them the facts. We built a police station in Palmer while I was there, and the chief and I filmed, you know, the old facility we had, we made presentations about, you know, what was needed, you know, where the deficiencies were, what the benefits of a new station were, we went on the cable TV and did that. So we did really the same thing with the casino. In other words, the council, it asked me to have public hearings to be able to hear both sides of the story. As you can imagine, mostly the people who were against it were the ones that showed up, so they became pretty controversial at times. But I tried to keep it on a positive basis, to get the facts out, to try to not be argumentative, but when, you know, total unfacts were brought up by people opposing it, I tried to at least explain, you know, what the real things were. So again, I think it made me more, you know, sensitive to how important it is to get as much information out as you can and to listen to what the other side says, and try to, you know, reason with them, and, you know, you can't always bring two sides together, and that's unfortunate. But if anything, it reinforced my feeling that, you know, communication, getting the word out to the public and answering the questions are really the best way to go.
That makes sense. And the other question I have is, you mentioned that Palmer is very similar to Southbridge. What would you say from your experience there and what you've seen in our town, what would you say the key differences between Palmer and Southbridge are, and why?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure how many differences there really are. I mean, you know, certainly every community is different. Palmer is smaller, the population's roughly 12,000, when you go as closer to 18. You had, you know, the one major, you know, business here for years, American Optical, they had several mills, but again, they went away and the emphasis has been on trying to fill those buildings, you know, get other businesses in there. And in Palmer's case, there was always that feeling that once the mills were gone, Palmer wasn't the same. But if you really looked at it, a lot of these buildings were filled and have been filled with new businesses, an industrial park was built. So in any community I've worked in, one of the things you have to do is try to get the people to understand the positives and focus on the positive rather than the negative. But I really, I'm familiar with Southbridge, having lived in Sturridge, you know, for 40-something years, and obviously, you know, we're the neighbor. But I don't think there's anything dramatically different there. I mean, there's always a little difference in, you know, personalities and so forth. But I think the challenges that both communities face and the opportunities they have are pretty similar.
Okay, and I guess the last question I had is, obviously Palmer has its courthouse and all of the associated issues with courthouses. What would you say, what would you say that the things that Palmer has that we don't have as far as that goes are, and how would you say, what would you say you see here in our town that would be our strengths and weaknesses?
Yeah. You know, I was thinking of that today, and, I mean, they both have hospitals, you know, Harrington is bigger and I think many more services. Well, I guess Wing has been doing well too, and Palmer's. You still have an airport? They don't have an airport any longer. What was it, the question again was what is?
What I was asking is, what would you say that the best, the biggest strengths, the strengths and weaknesses that you see in our town are?
Well, let's see, as far as the strength, I think one of the strengths that I've seen as I took the time to really start looking into what's been going on in Southbridge, to look at your website, look at some of the things you've accomplished, they both have the town council, town manager, former government. In Palmer, it's a little different from the standpoint that the town manager was the chief executive officer, and the town council functions more as only the legislative body. Your charter here has the town manager as the chief administrative officer, and I think your subcommittees, from what I've seen, I haven't, you know, been to meetings, but I've tried to follow the minutes and so forth and see what you've done, I think having, you know, council members, department heads, people from the public involved in those gives the Southbridge Town Council more of an understanding of the day-to-day operation, and I think that's a strength, when you have that many more people dealing with the issues you have, you know, whether it's gonna be things at the DPW or any other of that. So I think your former government from that standpoint is a strength, as long as you get councillors who are willing to put in that extra time and effort to make that work.
Very good. Councillor Lozow.
Charlie, welcome, and thank you very much for applying for the position.
Thank you.
I've been involved in many different searches, from superintendents to town managers, to various operations, and I think that there are a lot of different things you look for in a person. We can ask questions about different things that have happened in your life and your jobs and stuff like that. I think the informal discussion that was taking place in the interview process, I think, exposes you more for the person you are, and how you deal with people, how you deal with situations, how you deal with infrastructure. In looking at your background, your resume, and then talking to you and knowing you, I think that the things that I look for are not like the brick and mortar things, I think you can handle those well. I look for honesty, I look for integrity, I look for somebody that deals in good faith but strong enough to stand tall. You covered all those avenues during the interview process, so as I sit here today, you're the right fit. Southbridge is a tough political town, no question about it, it's not news to you, it's news to a lot of other people. But I think moving forward, your work ethic, your experience, I think I just welcome you to Southbridge, and I'm looking forward to working with you in good faith. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, I really appreciate that, and I'm certainly looking forward to working with all of you.
Very good. Councillor Rivas.
Hi, Charlie, thank you, thank you for applying, thank you for, you know, putting yourself out there for this position, which is, you know, an interim, so it's always difficult to come in, in the middle of all of these things happening in our town. My question, because I wasn't part of that group, and I am interested in some of the conversations that you had with the hiring committee around how to attract people to positions in town, I know that's, you know, the climate is very difficult, so I was curious to know about some of your strategies in this six months, what are some things that you would implement or carry on from what the town manager has started?
You mean as far as hiring and bringing people in? Well, you know, it's true, I mean, every municipality in the state is having issues. I mean, it's very difficult to find people and attract people to be into a municipal government, but looking at, you know, your staffing, I did get a list together, I tried to reach out to as many as I could last Wednesday just to meet some of the people, and I know you've got a lot of new hires, I think you've done a good job on, you know, diversity, you bring in people that reflect the diversity of the community, and I think those are the things you have to do. The, you know, to me, it's a great career, it's a great place to work, but today, with Facebook and criticism and everything else, it's hard to attract people to it. So I think from, you know, what I see, you know, you're doing the right things, I mean, the direction to try to encourage local residents to apply is good, because when you get them in here, you're also reflecting the diversity of the community. I did watch several of your meetings, and I went back and watched the one, I think, when you actually interviewed the town managers for when you hired, you know, Mike McCall, you know, currently. And I know that Councillor Marquetti had mentioned something about the fact that, you know, he's very concerned about education and training, and I think, you know, that's a good point, because if we want to bring people in, and we want them to work here and to grow here, then we also have to provide, you know, the training and the ability for them to qualify for the jobs and be here. So, you know, from the limited time I've had to look at this, I think you're doing the right thing, and I will certainly work to continue that and encourage, you know, movement in that direction, but, you know, I think you're doing a good job.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Great. Councillor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you first, Charlie, happy to see you again.
Thank you.
You know, I've known you and your wife for many years now, and I know the integrity you bring to your position. I followed your work closely as a town manager, and when I saw your name come up for consideration here tonight, I was quite excited to see that.
Thank you.
But I do wanna, following Councillor Rivas, is, I have a couple of questions, more pertaining around your budget style.
Okay.
We're gonna be overseeing the development of a new budget under, not only this outgoing manager, but with you, so I wanted to know what your budgetary insight would be into this town as you, you know, come in with a fresh eyes and fresh face, looking in on the process.
Well, I'm anxious to see, you know, I know that the staff is pulling together the requested budgets, you know, for the next fiscal year. My position on a budget has always been that, you know, we start out and we would always start the capital needs earlier on, you know, in the fall, to get that moving and get the capital things in there. You know, send out requests to the departments in December to find out what they need. But I'd also try to sit down, whether it was with the Board of Selectmen in Paxton, or, actually, when I was in Williamstown, my interim time there lapsed over into when I had to prepare the budget, so I'd sit down with the Board of Selectmen and find out what their priorities were, in Palmer I would do that, to find out, you know, what priorities were there, and try to use that in establishing the budget. Certainly, the biggest thing is to have a good handle on what the revenue will be, to be, you know, conservative enough to make sure that you're gonna meet that goal. But it's really, you know, a pretty basic and straightforward way to prepare a budget, to find out, you know, what the needs are, and make sure it balances with the revenues. So I've looked at, you know, your budget as they were presented in the past few years and the current presentation that's on the website, and I think the budget is, certainly has its challenges, as most budgets these days do, but I'm looking forward to, you know, working, you know, with the departments that are involved in that to get the budget established.
I also asked, wanted to ask one more question about how you would work with the state-appointed receiver in the schools over your term. That's a really big issue on the lot, on our minds here in town.
Right.
And it's, I would like to know what your thoughts were on, not necessarily the receivership, but necessarily on working with.
Yeah, no, I haven't really worked with a receiver, but I have, I've followed up, you know, on some of the conversations that have been had on that. My role as administrator, a town administrator or as the manager, has been to have a good relationship with the school, to understand, you know, what the budget is, what their needs are, you know, to try to, you know, reach an agreement on what can be funded, what the town can afford to do, and what's really needed. So I did see in the goals that the town manager reported on, that he had some goals to communicate and review with the receiver, and he's, you know, achieved those things. What I would look forward to doing in that interim period we have while the town manager is still here, would be to, you know, meet with him on that, understand what the role really is, what his concerns really were, and what he had hoped to achieve, you know, with that receiver. I will do everything I can, you know, to work the way the town needs to be. I know that some of the concerns I heard the other day were, or at one of your meetings, was the fact that there's a concern that some of the salaries, some of the expenditures are things that are gonna be very difficult for the town to sustain. So I'd really wanna get to the bottom of that and find out, you know, where the budget really is and what the impact will be based on what's been improved there.
Thank you, very thoughtful answers, I would expect from you, Mr. Blanchard, so I look forward to supporting your appointment tonight.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Councillor Marquetti, then Councillor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, Charlie, long time no see.
It's been a while.
Just before I ask any questions, I just want to tell you, if you wanna bring a casino here, I'm for it.
I think this may be gone, but it might have been good.
So there, we do have a lot of issues that are in this town, very important right now, that are on my radar. I know some of the other councillors have their concerns too, but some of my concerns are right now, we are, we have a lot of problems with our roads. We have a road improvement plan that was started a couple of years ago, last year kind of tapered off a little bit, so I want to get back into that, fixing our roads. We have a lot of really big problems with our roads. Main Street was redone, but we're already finding problems with that again, and I know that there is some arrangement, agreement, that they're gonna come back. But we're also working on, we wanna start working on Ellis Road, I'd like to see something done with Gulpwood Road, and there's a lot of other road projects in town that are coming up through River Street, I think, Hamilton Street, West Street's being worked on, South Street, there's a lot of roads right now in town.
I've traveled over some of those, I know what you mean.
We also, I'm also on a capital planning committee, and we're, right now, we are going over a lot of the requests from department heads. The thing is, the finance director will be leaving really soon, so that might be something that you're gonna have to get involved with. Unless you can find some, finance director has some experience in that, but I think you probably have a lot of experience with those type of things.
Well, I have, yeah, I've certainly been involved in finance, it would be good to have a good finance director, but we'll certainly try to adjust that. I mean, as far as the paving and so forth, I will, you know, meet with the new DPW director and see just where things stand. When I was in Palmer, we did introduce, again, we had been, years ago, had one, an updated road program and so forth, so it's something I'm familiar with and I'm looking forward to working with the people.
Yeah, the DPW director is key, but it's always the town manager that's always gonna have to be involved.
Oh, yes, there's no question about it, you're right.
And then the last thing is, we are, we have curbside garbage collection in town, which is ending next year. So looking at the, we are looking at funding mechanisms going for next year. Excuse me, some, we may go with taxes, we may go with an enterprise fund, we may have a pay-as-you-throw program, but this is something that the finance department and the department head is going to have to get involved in. The Division of Local Services recommends that the finance department and the department had define costs and expenditures so that a fair and equitable rate schedule can be established. Even though the committee is looking at it, it's not something that we are gonna be able to be able to come up with a rate schedule, that's something that the finance department's gonna have to look at.
Right.
Before we even vote on that. Council's not gonna be able to do that, our committee's not gonna be able to do that. And again, because she's leaving, that's something that you're probably gonna have to take charge of.
Right.
Because, and I'll tell you why, this needs to be in place this summer, so you have about four months really to get this something in place. If we do a tax override, well, that's one thing. The town manager has already given his opinion that it could be a two-and-a-half override. But if we do a enterprise fund, then that has to be, they recommend that that be on the FY23, start of the FY24, which would be this July, so.
Right.
It's something that I think you're going to have to be involved with, I don't know if you've ever been involved in something like a curbside program before, but I would like you to take a look at it.
I certainly will, Councillor Marquetti. The, I did review the information on the website on the work you've already done, and I did have some exposure to this. Palmer did not have curbside pickup, they always just have private pickup, they don't even have a transfer station, that was gone away quite a while ago. And so the council had asked me to look into how we would set up curbside, you know, collections. So we reviewed it, I reviewed it. That was one of the things I was talking about before, how the involvement in your former government is good, because you've got a whole committee, you know, working on this, whereas when they asked me to do it, it was me and my assistant trying to get all those numbers together. But we did send out an RFP. One of the problems we had is, is we tried to research, you know, what were people really doing with their trash, who was dealing with, you know, what company. We found there was a big gap of people who didn't report anything, didn't, we weren't sure what they were doing with it. So one of the issues we had when we did get proposals in was that we really couldn't guarantee a percentage if we were trying to do it voluntarily or, you know, through a non-tax item. So it ended, we didn't do anything with it. But I have had some experience with it, I'm really anxious to learn more about what you've done, and I will do what I can to, you know, to help that along as it needs to be.
All right, thank you, I'm outside.
Okay. Councillor Steves, then Councillor Montigny.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Charlie, I was curious about a couple of things. One was sparked by what Jasmine said earlier, which is, what's your, what would you say your approach is to recruiting citizens to fill vacancies and boards in commissions? Because we have quite a few of those, I can think of conservation especially in the Interfeaval, and we've had a bit of an issue over the last several years of having boards that are only half-functional in some cases. So how would you go about getting more people involved?
Well, you know, again, it's one of those issues that every community is facing. You know, there's, I think one thing is to try to develop a listing or a pool of people who at least might have some interest in serving on a board or a committee, and try to reach out to them when an opening comes up to discuss, you know, what that really is. A lot of it seems to be just reaching out to people that you know that might be interested. But again, it's one of those things that, no matter what community you look at, you know, that's an issue, to get volunteers that wanna commit the time and the effort. You know, it's no different, you know, you don't have, you know, obviously, the town meeting former government, but again, you know, Williamstown, other communities, they're all wondering why nobody shows up at town meeting anymore, and, you know, you're trying to get, you know, do they move the time, do they do that, do they change things? So it is an issue, I don't certainly have any answer, I am aware of it, and I would, you know, do whatever I can to try to get the word out there and help you find people for these positions.
The other thing I have is kind of along, more along the lines of what Councillor Marquetti was asking, which is, one of the issues that, we have a stormwater bylaw we passed about two years ago, it hasn't
two years ago, it hasn't really been implemented, because we're still kind of in the figure, in this phase of figuring out how we're going to fund it and whatnot. What kind of experience do you have with implementing stormwater issues?
Well, in Palmer, we did talk about whether or not we would need to have a fee on that. And by the time I retired in 2019, it hadn't gone to a fee. We didn't, you know, need to do that. So I really don't know, you know, what they've done, but I'll certainly, you know, look into that.
Thank you. Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Charlie, it's nice to meet you finally.
Thank you.
And, you know, I have some questions, but I want the viewers at home to understand, because we have the, you know, resume right here, but I mean, you've been the interim town manager before, like you're applying for now, but a town manager, a town administrator, selectman. You've done a lot of different things, collective bargaining agreements, major renovations, and overall improved financial conditions of the towns you've been in. Palmer, looking at it, they had the town manager, town council, former government, like he said, which is great to, and it's refreshing to speak to a town manager that has that experience. You know, in your first six months as interim there, you worked on hiring a new DPW director and town accountant. We just hired a DPW director and we need a town accountant. So it's a great thing that you've had this experience. You did debt exclusion in that community for a police station, much similarly to what we're doing with the fire station here. So it's good that you'll be here as that kicks off. One thing that I saw that's really interesting is the major renovations that you did to the town hall down there. I'm assuming that was a historical-type building like this, too?
Well, not as old as this. I think it was originally built in 1960.
Oh, okay.
It was interesting, because when it was built, it was sort of a joint venture with the state. The courthouse was one side and the town hall was on the other, and then the courthouse built another one, so they, so it needed upgrading. And as we went into it, we found it even needed more. So unfortunately, I did have to go back and, you know, get more money. But ultimately, it got done the way it should be, and it became a good renovation.
Yeah, because that is, that's an issue that I know is really important to myself and Chairman Daniel, is the preservation of this building.
Right.
I mean, we had roof leaks this year, and we were fortunate enough to get them fixed before the cold and the snow came. But there's, there's long-term repairs that we're hoping to do here. We have a great grant writer downstairs in the economic department, Peg Dean, and she has mentioned now and again about potential long-term grants that are available for historic buildings. So I'm hoping that one of the projects that you'll be able to look into at least is pointing us in the right direction to hopefully have repairs to this building done over the next three to five years. Counsel Moaketti mentioned the roads and the Main Street agreement for them to come back and fix some of the problems there, and a bunch of different road projects, South Street, West Street, that are all trying to almost simultaneously get underway in the springtime. So it's important to me, because you'll be in charge here at the time, if we get a good jump at starting those projects off on the right foot. It might be something that'd make the taxpayers very happy in the face of some tough decisions here with the trash curbside collection. But the only other thing, a question I had is cable access is still important to me. I used to run cable access here with a great team of people, and we're overdue on the franchise agreement. Charter, oh, spectrum, I should say. It seems like in the area, they're kind of not as interested in buttoning up their franchise agreements with multiple towns. I was wondering if you had any experience, because I know Palmer, I've been to their local access before, and it's a very nice station, so I didn't know if you had any experience with that.
Right. I have had experience in that. It's interesting you bring that up. When I was in Palmer, I did negotiate the new cable TV contract with Comcast.
Okay.
And one of the big things out there was that, although the license is really for cable TV, you know, it isn't really for, you know, high-speed internet or anything like that. But obviously, if they have the cable there, it helps. So in Palmer, there was an area of town that apparently had missed, well, it still didn't really quite need it, you know, the density requirement to have the cable brought out there. And this was a real problem for a lot of people, because a lot of expensive houses were built up there, people were working from home, and that, they were clamoring for that. So as part of the Comcast agreement, we started early. I got with a fellow who manages the Impact TV, he had great records as far as the cost that he had, what he needed for capital improvements and so forth. We put together a package and we insisted that that area be covered, and they did it. I mean, they went through it, didn't quite meet what current, you know, density requirements are, you know, for running the cable, but they did. So that worked out very well. In Williamstown, when I got there, I noticed that there was a letter to the town manager about the fact it's time to renew the cable. And I asked him what's going on, he said, well, he said, we haven't done much with that because of COVID and so forth. So it took me probably four months to get anyone to call me back and start talking about this thing. And it was, I would say, from probably August of, you know, the year prior to when I left, you know, last June, a lot of effort went into getting an agreement. We finally reached, you know, what was an agreement we were going to start to review. And to make a long story short, it hasn't been, I checked today to find out if they actually signed the contract. And from what I understand, they didn't. So I'm not sure where it seems, but I have to, you're correct. I mean, charter spectrum, you know, doesn't have, doesn't seem to have a lot of incentive to get these things resolved. They'd rather just have the whole thing, you know, move along. So I'm anxious to, you know, dig into that and see what I can do on that, because I've got experience working with the same people that are working with you on that.
That's great, and I'm sure we'll talk more about the specifics of that.
Definitely, I'd like to.
But that's great, and I've heard that Senator Fatman kind of helped start the conversations in Webster, just as a point of information for you. But I'm looking forward to the next six months, and thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Ruiz.
Hi, Charlie. I just, I have another question about, just, we do have a lot of transition right now, and so, and I know you've been in interim before, and sort of, in your experience, or what are some things that you have done in those situations to sort of make the transition smooth for staff, and making sure that in this climate, where it's hard to hire people, that we don't lose anyone because of the transition and that people, you know, people get nervous-
Right.
...when their leader, you know, and other leaders in the town hall leave. In your experience, what are some things that you've done to sort of help the staff and support the staff through that transition, and kind of make sure that all of these different projects that we have, we have the rail trail, we have a lot of different things that are happening-
Right.
...that staff is supported, and all of those things that they're going to be continuing to do.
Yeah. I think one of the most important things a manager can do is to really get to know, you know, the managers and the staff, get to, you know, understand what their issues, what their concerns are, and to try to, you know, be there to support them in any way you can. I mean, there, sometimes there are things that you can just bring in from prior experience that helps move things along. When I went to Williamstown, the reason they needed a new town manager was that an issue had come up prior year with a lawsuit filed by a sergeant in the police department charging all kinds of things and wrongdoing in the police, in the police department. The lawsuit was filed, then it was withdrawn, but it had a devastating effect on the community. You know, people were really, you know, concerned, and it led to the retirement of the police chief and ultimately the resignation of the town manager. So as you can imagine, it kind of carried over from the police department to the town hall to all town employees, and they all felt they were kind of under the gun, that people were feeling that they weren't doing their jobs right, that nothing was happening, you know, well, and then COVID hit as well. So what I tried to do there was reach out to the people, let them understand, I know what they're doing, what their jobs are, be there to support them in what they need to do, and then get the information out to the public and also, in that case, to the Board of Selectmen on the positive things that are being done. So we stopped, you know, focusing on the negatives, even negatives that were kind of fabricated and not, you know, real negatives. So I think the biggest thing you can do is be there to talk to them, you know, check on how things are going, know that you're there to support them, and we'll do everything we can to get them the tools they need to get the job done.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
My name is George Shenyah, Lieutenant Sergeant, Southridge here. I just want to say it's a pleasure to see you coming forward tonight in council, considering you to be our interim town manager. When news broke over the weekend that Charlie Blanchard was going to be our new acting town manager, there was a shockwave kind of went through the town, that we were going to have somebody that knows our town, who lives very close by and know the issues. And most importantly that I heard was the fact that, at the end of the day, you don't just go home, you're involved in your community that you live, and you're involved in the community that you work. So at five o'clock, you were here, you went home, and when you went to events, and you supported your community-
Thank you.
...both on the job and off the job. Here in Southridge, we have some unique things coming forward. We have a new fire station that's soon going to be going online. We have trash we're going to have to worry about, and we have the everyday bills that need to be paid. We're always looking for some funds and how we're going to do this and be able to maintain the level of services that we presently have, never mind the level of services that we may need to add to. I was kind of pleased to hear that you were involved in the host agreement for the casino when you were in Sturbridge. Counsel Montigny, a few months ago, brought up about the Amazon Building at the end of 169, and he talked about how it was going to affect our community, and suggested that we try to do something with that. I realize that the law doesn't require them to have a host community to their neighbors, but we have two major facilities that's going to be coming forward in Southridge. One is the gas LNG facility and the Amazon. And I know they have approached the Amazon for some, probably, you know, assistance on how they could help the community, and I haven't heard where it's gone, and I'm not privy to that kind of stuff. But do you feel that there's still a possibility that you could approach these two companies and ask how they can assist us because of the impact that they're going to create when they stay in operation? Traffic, especially here in Southridge, they're going to be coming down South Street, Eastwood Road. Is there, you think we missed the boat, or is that something that you could work on?
Well, I certainly, you know, try to look into that, George, but you certainly haven't missed a boat. I mean, I'm on the, I'm chairman of the planning board in Sturbridge, so I'm very concerned about, and we're very concerned about the traffic in Sturbridge. And so, you know, Town Mayor and I, a year or so ago, when the LPG gas thing was going to be up under Route 20, went to the hearing on that, we tried to, you know, explain all the things that were happening in Sturbridge, our new coal storage facilities, two of them, all the issues we're going to have. We have a new EV center coming in there. Again, how we're going to deal with the traffic, and so, okay, we've got to put this in there. They moved down to, you know, Charlton Road, wherever it is, so they're a little bit impacted off that, but then Amazon came in. Again, with the Amazon, our town planner reached out to, you know, get them to participate in traffic relief for Sturbridge, and the answer we really got is that it can handle it, and, you know, it isn't going to be an impact. So I don't hold a lot of hope that there is hope for a host agreement agreement, but it's something I certainly can look into. You know, the town manager in Charlton is a good friend of mine, in fact, he was my executive assistant while I was in Palmer, and so I'll really reach out to him and find out, you know, what's going on with that and learn more about it. But my experience so far has been that they're getting their approvals from the state, you know, they're not really, they haven't participated in anything, well, maybe a small contribution toward an overall traffic study for that section of Route 20 going to Sturbridge, but beyond that, there hasn't been any outreach to provide anything to any of the communities around that I'm aware of.
It was also good to hear you say about cable TV. It was funny, just today, my neighbor complained about cable TV and was wondering when council and the manager was going to start doing something for it. Her cable bill increased $7.50, and she has to give up cable because she can't afford the $7.50. In our community, with the taxes that are going to be coming forward, we have a lot of poor people, and we have elderly on fixed income, and I don't know how it's going to happen. So if you can reach out to those people and get a little bit help in the financial end of things, we're from Amazon, maybe, LNG plant, I'm sure every little dollar will help. We are a poor community, we have a lot of poor people, and we have a lot of elderly on fixed incomes, and I'm just afraid as the tax rates go up, they look, people will say, geez, the tax rate went down. People don't look at the tax rate. People look at the bottom line, and when they see their bill go up from $500 to $600 from last year, that's what they look at. They don't understand that the valuation goes up, taxes go down, they just don't understand it. They look at the bottom line. So I look forward to you in the next six months being able to help our community and being involved in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll do what I can. Thank you.
Counsel Adal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Welcome on board.
Thank you.
We've never met, I did hear of you, the saying you're a strong guy, and if you find a piece of puzzle, you will put it in the right place and you continue looking for the other one. And I hope that is true. I know you have only six months, period, working in here, and I know to put a lot of things on your plate.
Right.
But I hope one of those things you put on your plate, if you found the right direction for it, you move forward, you don't just maintain to when we get the new town manager. I hope you take the action and you move forward in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Counsel Steves.
Thank you. To follow up on what George actually asked, we're in the process of, just starting the process of municipal aggregation for electricity, because we just voted to approve it, to prove going with good energy to start doing that process. What kind of experience do you have with that kind of negotiation? And specifically, are you aware of anything where we could do some sort of aggregation process with other communities for things like cable, internet service, multiple commitments, multiple committees, projects using either equipment or bigger, bigger ticket projects that communities can share and reduce the costs?
Well, it's something, again, I'd have to, you know, look into. I haven't been involved with any municipal, you know, aggregation programs in Palmer and so forth. One thing we did do, you know, was go out, you know, for energy contracts, you know, for gas and for electricity and so forth. I have read, you know, the news articles, both, I think Sturbridge is kind of looking at a program, but one we got a little different from you people. All I can say, Counsel Steves, is that I'll look into it and do my best to find out what the facts are and let you know what makes the most sense. I mean, as far as the cable, you know, one of the things people always talk about, well, it seems whether it was Comcast or Charter Spectrum, I mean, no one's ever really that happy with the cable, there's always some complaints. And people say, well, the contract's coming up, we'll get somebody else in here. And most people don't realize that it's a non-exclusive license. I mean, anyone could come in, but of course, the idea is, would you come in and run all this new cable and then hope to get enough customers to really pay for it? And so that's why, you know, communities are always dealing really with the same cable company on these 10-year contracts. So again, I'll certainly make it a priority to look at that and see if there's something that I could recommend.
And to follow up with that, have you ever had any experience with municipal ownership of any of these kinds of facilities?
Of what?
Municipal ownership.
Well, in other words-
Of various utilities.
As far as the solar, ground solar away, we didn't have ownership, but we did have a partnership with a solar company on one of our locations at Baptist Hill. But beyond that, municipal ownership of-
Well, I was thinking in terms of like either cable or energy or internet or those kinds of things. I know there are a few communities out there, for example, that have municipal energy plants.
Well, you know, when I was in Paxton, we did have a municipal light plant.
Okay.
And again, the municipal light plants, you know, generally have carried over because they were established at a time when it was, you know, economical to do that, and they invested them and kept them there. So I've had experience, you know, working with a municipal light company, and a few other communities in the area, Sterling and Princeton have them as well, so we talk about, you know, the benefits and so forth, and the impact it had on the service for the towns. But beyond that, I don't have any experience in that area.
Okay, because I know I personally think it might be worth investigating the idea of doing that, given how expensive these costs have become, both for the town and the residents, so.
Well-
I don't know if it would be too late to be able to do something like that, but-
As you mentioned that, actually. Williamstown, I was working in Williamstown on a study that they had started- on a study that they had started and let drop because of COVID, and it came back up. But they are looking at broadband, municipal broadband. And so, just before I left, I did spend some time on that, getting information to the select board. And we used a company that had originally started out with a design several years ago. I brought them back in to update it. So, I'm a little familiar with it. I have seen the results of the studies they did in Williamstown. It certainly is doable. But it's an investment, and you have to be able to be confident that people are going to subscribe, and you're going to get the kind of revenue you expect to have. And one of the big things about it was, the flag always went up that as soon as you start talking about that, then the cable companies begin to change their rates and try to hold on to the customers. So, it's kind of a, maybe a moving target.
Right.
But hopefully, there'll be time to look at that, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
The only thing that I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
I would suggest we move up his starting date till tomorrow.
Yesterday, you mean.
I don't know why we're waiting another week. I think we should start...
Well, we have to, we have to get a contract put together.
Well, all right. If he's willing to start tomorrow, why not tomorrow?
Work for free.
With no contract?
We might want to have that.
I thought we were discussing the contract tonight.
We are.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Blanchard, would you like to say anything before we vote? No, I really, I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all. I'm very, very, very pleased to be given this opportunity to work with you, and I really, really look forward to accomplishing, you know, what you need to have accomplished while I'm here. So, thank you very, very much. I really look forward to this. Very good. Thank you. We have a motion in a second on the floor.
Roll call.
Roll call, vote.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Lozo.
Yes.
Counsel Moncetti.
Yes.
Counsel Rivas.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
And Counsel Adams.
Yes. Very good. Nine oh. Mr. Blanchard, you're appointed. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. We'll start contract negotiations tomorrow after... See you tomorrow. Yep. I believe I have my employment physical on Wednesday, so we'll keep moving right along here. Okay. Great. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gen item number five, vote to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Act Chapter 38, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the interim town manager.
So...
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozo, second by Counsel Ryan. Roll call.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozo.
Yes.
Counsel Moncetti.
Yes.
Counsel Rivas.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel.
Yes. Very good. We will return to open session only to adjourn. Once again, we will return to open session only to adjourn.